All right, at this time I will call the Wednesday, October 17th, 2018, meeting of the zoning boards of appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cho? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roche?
Here.
Ms. Yutman?
Present.
Mr. Warrenborough?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. We have a call. Let's see. Are there any changes to be made? All right. We all have received the minutes of our previous meeting of September 18th, 2018. All had time to review those. Are the additions are correct? You still got your minutes? Hearing the motions of both. The votes in second would be indicated by both. Voice vote are all in favor of approval of the minutes, indicated by same eye. And then approved by the same side. Minutes are approved. Will there be communications?
We've received four communications, and I believe they all pertain to the case. You should have those.
At this time, then, I will ask anyone who might want to testify before the board to stand, please. Can you swear that for our testimony you give tonight, you will be true and accurate for the best of your power?
I do.
Thank you.
We have a continued public hearing. All right. Then we move to our new public hearing of the DDA 2018-major-ten. Request by Andrew Dell on behalf of Glover Marketing LLC for a major variance without parking spaces or less than the required length and access drive that is less than the required width and your parking spaces that back directly onto the public right-of-way to 401 North Broadway in the B-4 Central Business Zoning District. I believe that one of the members of the board is the interested property owner of Engus property, and will be accused when he starts.
Yep, thank you.
At this time, that is your request. Thank you. Do you have a staff report, please?
So this is an application for a major variance to allow a parking lot that does not meet the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. This property, let me pull up the location map. Property is at 401, that didn't come through, right. There we go, okay. This is at 401 North Broadway. It's known as the Broadway Food Hall. So I'll probably be referring to it as that for most of this presentation. So this is in the B-4 zoning district, which does not require any parking. However, when parking is provided, it needs to meet the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. Staff had approved site plans for this site, which show one row of parking, and those site plans complied with the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to pull up those site plans now. This is a better version than what went out in the memo. I was able to get an electronic version. So you'll note, on the approved site plans, you know, there's one row of parking here. This is on the west side of the site. There's one row of parking here. You have two wide driveways, one here and one here. You'll notice there's no parking striped in front of the building up here, which is on the northeast part of the site. And the lot dimensions, which you probably can't read, but I will tell you, those are 18 and 1/2 feet by 8 foot 9 inches, which meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The parking lot that was striped matches what's in Exhibit G in your packet. And this is a little light on the screen, but hopefully you can see it. And so you'll notice that what was striped, again, there are parking spaces along the building, but then there are an additional 10 spaces that were striped next to the sidewalk on sort of the southeastern part of the site. There were an additional four parking spaces striped on the northeastern part of the site in front of the building there. In your exhibits, you do have some photos as well that show what that parking lot looks like today, so, or, well, as of last week. So last week, so you see, this is the northeastern part of the building. So you have cars parking all along, this is during lunchtime, so it is busy, parking all along the sidewalk. This probably doesn't happen often, there's a truck blocking the entryway. And then you'll note that you can see the public right-of-way starts right here where the hand, where I'm putting the hand here. So you can see that as it's striped, cars, you know, people are parking their cars where they can overhang, overhang the sidewalk. There's, so there's really nothing preventing them from overhanging the sidewalk, which is, you know, is against the law. So what, let me go back here. So what staff's going to ultimately recommend would be a lesser variance, and this is in Exhibit H, and I'm going to that now just since we're talking about the site plans. But all the spaces currently have been striped to less than the required length of 18 feet 6 inches. So at a minimum, all the spaces that can be striped to 18 foot 6 inches should be striped to that, to that length. In addition, we'd recommend a partial curb cut closure for the southeastern part of the site. And if they wanted to leave part of that open for an access drive, they should be able to fit in an access drive, an in-out access drive that would meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. Any spaces that would be next to the sidewalk should have wheel stops on them so that they're not overhanging the sidewalk, so that vehicles aren't overhanging the sidewalk. With respect to the northeastern part of the site, even, so on this, on this site plan, you can see even typical vehicles, which are what these boxes represent. So your typical-sized vehicle would be overhanging the right-of-way for these northernmost sites. So we would not recommend any, any parking be allowed there. However, there are two spaces that could be marked as compact spaces and marked as employee-only, which would see less, you know, less traversing across the right-of-way, across the sidewalk. And I think we'd be, you know, staff would be comfortable supporting a variance to allow that.
I have a question. What is a partial closure?
So essentially, you would say close from, you know, from where it's, where it's, where it's open right now, you'd close it to about here, and then you'd still have an in and out driveway there. But, so, so section, in Section 20 of the city code, it is required that if you're not using a driveway, you have to close it. And in the case right now, these parking spaces are acting both as access drives and as parking spaces, which, which is not allowed. You can't have something be both a parking space and an access drive. It has to be one or the other. So if parking spaces are allowed to, to stay adjacent to the sidewalk, they would need wheel stops, and they would need to be, so essentially, you'd be closing, you'd be closing that, that access point, and according to Section 20 of the city code, you would then have to close the curb. So that's a requirement from city code. So you couldn't just put wheel stops there and call it a day. I do want to point out that this Exhibit H in front of you, had we been presented with, with these, with the plans in front of you in Exhibit G, these are the recommendations that staff would have, would have made if we had been presented with these plans prior to the, the lot being striped. The exception to that might be the two spaces here that would require a variance, but we would, would have offered that as an option. Just so, just for a little, a little more background on the site, so you'll see, the site is, so the building is oddly oriented due to its location between Broadway and the Boneyard Creek, so it's slightly off parallel from Broadway, from Broadway Avenue. There was a front portion on this building, which you can kind of see where the footprint of that, of that building was. So there was a front portion that had parking in front of it for, for decades, but that, that part of the building, excuse me, that part of the building was demolished, which made more space that could be used for parking in front of the building, and that parking could be compliant with the zoning ordinance. That Northern Edition today is pretty much the same as it has been, been for decades. And it had, it had been used for parking. Doesn't look like parking was ever really striped there, but it had been used for parking for some time. The zoning, as I mentioned, is B-4. All the, the surrounding area is, is B-4 as well, so this is all central business zoning. So as I mentioned, the, the approved site plans for the Broadway Food Hall showed just one row of parking, and that complied with the ordinance. There were no parking spaces that were striped before the food hall opened for business, and then once it opened, it was, it was quickly apparent that that one row of parking wasn't enough. There were a lot of folks parking haphazardly in the remaining paved area. So then, as I mentioned, without submitting revised plans to, to add more parking to the site, the, the owners had parking spaces striped, and so that, that has led to this variance request. So if granted, the request would allow, as I said, 24 substandard spaces, because none of them are striped to the, to the required length. And I do want to point out that there are other instances downtown where, where parking does back directly onto the street, but in all of those cases, there's either been a variance granted, it's an existing legally non-conforming use that's been, you know, that's been consistently used for decades. In some cases, they, they might back onto an alley, which is allowed by city code. And in one, yeah, in one rare case on 208 West Griggs Street, the parking is actually in the city right-of-way, but it looks like it's, it's part of a parking lot for that So to move on to the, to the variance criteria, actually, before, let's see. So before I move on to the variance criteria, I want to, to point out that, that the only thing that's under consideration by the zoning board tonight is the major variance. So we're not considering, in one of your communications, there was some mention of the non-conforming, the non-conforming use, there was an issue with, the owner believes that the, there's a non-conforming, the non-conforming parking use is valid, but that's not up for consideration. The property owner could, under the zoning ordinance, there are procedures for the property owner to follow if they want to appeal the decision that those spaces are non-conforming spaces. So tonight was before you, is just the, the major variance, and the only criteria you should consider are the major variance criteria. And I'll, I'll speak more, more to that before I wrap up. But on to the variance criteria, I'll go through these, hopefully, pretty, pretty quickly. Number one is, ask if there are special circumstances or special practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned in carrying out the application of the ordinance. As I said, since parking is desired on the site, the layout has to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The approved plan had 10 parking spaces, and that complied with the ordinance. If there are more parking spaces that are desired, it's possible to add more parking spaces by closing the southern driveway. So there really are no special circumstances or practical difficulties in applying the zoning ordinance to the southern part of the property. On the northeastern part of the property, with respect to those, those four parking spaces there, that area couldn't, could not be used for parking that would meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. However, it could accommodate two compact car spaces if a variance is granted that would allow those spaces to back out directly onto Broadway Avenue. So we feel this is a special circumstance with respect to that northeastern part of the parcel. Number two is that the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege, because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure. So the, that area on the northeastern part of the site has historically been used for parking, but is not large enough to have parking spaces that meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and would not back onto Broadway Avenue. So this is a special circumstance with respect to that part of the site. The remaining variance requests for the southern part of the site would serve as a special privilege to the property owner. That area already can be used for parking, that meets the requirements of the zoning And if more parking is desired, they have the option to close that curb and install parking that would meet the, that would meet code. Number three is that the variance request is not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. So when the owner purchased the property, there was parking that was in front of both parts of the building, but they demolish, or they demolish the front part of the, of the southern part of the building, which increased the area they could use for parking. But it, it seems reasonable that they would expect that they could have some parking in front of the building. As I've stated, the owner submitted site plans that complied with the zoning ordinance. City staff approved those plans, and on April 20th of this year, our building inspector advised one of the property owners that if they wanted to install an alternative parking plan, they should first submit plans to the city and then have those plans approved prior to striping the parking lot. You can read those correspondences, or that correspondence in Exhibit E. However, the owner did not submit new plans. They striped the parking in its current configuration, and now this variance request is before you. So the variance request is a direct result of the property owner's actions. The part of the variance that pertains to the, that northeastern part of the building, as I said, that's had parking there historically. So the request for that area is not really a result of a condition created by the property owner, and they just want to reestablish parking in that area. Criteria four is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. If granted, we don't feel that the variance would alter the character of the neighborhood. There are many service parking lots in the surrounding area. Many of, of these are paved pretty close to the sidewalk or the street. Number five is that the variances will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. In the staff memo, we had stated that they might cause a nuisance to the property to the east, but two of the communications that we received today, one of the communications is from the property owner to the east, one is from the business owner to the east, and both of those, or, yeah, both of those communications have, have said that they do not think that it would cause a nuisance. So under this variance criteria, we do not think that this would cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. And finally, number six is that the variance request generally represents the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. Again, the request is to allow all of the parking spaces to be left as-is, which are all substandard. So a lesser deviation would be to, at a minimum, restripe all those spaces so that they would meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Furthermore, if the southern driveway were closed or narrowed as required by city code, the entire parking area to the south could meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and then only the four northernmost spaces would require variances. As I said, two of those spaces are just too small and would require, or would have people hanging over the sidewalk, so we can't allow those. But a lesser request would be to allow two of the parking spaces in that area, and we would recommend those be used for employees only and compact cars only, and we feel that that would represent the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. So the staff recommendation, which I've alluded to a couple times, but goes, I go more in-depth into on page six of your memo, I'll just read the, the recommended conditions for the variance. So number one is that only the requests pertaining to the southernmost parking spaces adjacent to the northeastern part of the building are granted. Those spaces with the dimensions specified in Exhibit G are allowed to back directly onto Broadway Avenue, and must be signed to indicate that they are for employees only and for compact cars only. Number two is that the southern driveway must be removed and replaced with a new barrier, curb, and streetscaping to match the existing streetscaping on Broadway Avenue. Alternatively, the, the driveway may be partially closed, meeting those same, same requirements, if an access drive is installed that meets the standards of the zoning ordinance and city code. Number three is that wheel stops must be installed in all of the parking spaces that abut the public sidewalk, except for the two in the earlier condition that would be allowed to back onto Broadway Avenue. Number four, that all standard parking spaces must be striped to 18 feet 6 inches deep, and all compact parking spaces are striped to at least 15 feet 6 inches. Before I wrap up, I wanted to read a statement. This is from our city attorney, and our city attorney advises the following. "The city acknowledges that it received a letter from Ms. Jenny Park, attorney representing the property owner for the major variance. Ms. Park's letter contends that a non-conforming use regarding the parking situation exists, and that the property owner has neither abandoned nor discontinued the purported non-conforming use. The only issue that is now properly and legally pending before the board is the application for a major variance concerning parking. At this point in time, the board does not have the, does not have any authority whatsoever to address, consider, or discuss any issue regarding the property owner's contention regarding a non-conforming use, since the steps provided in Section 11-3D of the city's zoning ordinance have not been initiated or followed. Therefore, on the advice of the city attorney, the board should not consider, discuss, or undertake any deliberations whatsoever regarding the existence, abandonment, or discontinuation of any non-conforming use urged by the property owner." That concludes my report, and I can take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there questions for staff?
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
Just to sort of set the parameters of what we will discuss, then, this board as constituted, how far do our rights and powers go? Is this word from the city attorney, the rules of this, like, the rules that we must abide by, by the city, by the law, or is it a suggestion, since, the way I understand, we are, we, we, as, as a board, have certain judicial powers, correct? Certain judicial powers in this case, so to speak?
Yeah, I think so to speak, but...
I'm, I'm just curious. Is this a recommendation from the city attorney or an order? I'm just curious.
It is, it is the advice of the city attorney that you not consider the, the non-conforming use in your discussions, simply because there are, there is an appeals process-
Right.
-for a property owner to appeal a decision such as a non-conforming use.
That makes sense.
And that, and that is not part of the request before you tonight.
Got it. Thank you. I just wanted to check.
Yes, go ahead.
Has the city received complaints from users about the parking lot?
Not that I know of, so...
Okay. Do you know of any crashes or safety issues in the parking lot?
None that we know of. I mean, I assume if something took place on private property, we might not know about it-
Okay.
...but I haven't heard one way or the other.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
Has the food hall actually opened?
Yeah, they've been open probably a good six months.
Exactly what is in there? I'm a little big-minded, I guess.
There's, so there's, there are various food vendors in there. There's a, an open, a pretty sizable open space with tables, so you get food, and you eat at large tables.
It's a lot like a food court in a, in a mall, so to speak, where they have different vendors and common seating area. It's quite, quite busy during lunchtime. Been there a couple times.
No.
It's nice.
Okay.
Okay. We have no concern about the fire hydrant there?
We do, and that's something we're going to discuss with Public Works, that's on city property, so we'll need to do something about that. If wheel stops are added, that would certainly help, but we should probably, you know, we're, we're looking into it. We've had these discussions.
If my memory serves me right, there's a, there's another fire hydrant to the north at Little Porky's Lot, which is kind of in the same situation, except there are wheel stops on that lot. And I, it just, you know, every time you see a fire hydrant, you see yellow lines. You see no parking in that particular area for, I assume, obvious reasons.
Maneuverability and things like that.
So I was wondering if that was a consideration, because that's pretty close to what would be the north entrance if they blocked off the south entrance. And then, like, I'm just a little confused here, I guess. I'm thinking snow removal, okay? I'm thinking it's their, it's their duty to clear the sidewalk, right? The business owner's duty to clear the sidewalk if you declare a snow emergency, I guess, is when they're forced to do it.
I, I believe so, and I think downtown's the only area we require that, but I'm not-
This is considered downtown.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if this is within that zone. I imagine it would be, but I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. And then, I guess, the only other thing, this originally, they, they're not required to have any parking, as was stated in the, in the report. And I guess I'll ask, have we, we haven't given full, what do you call it, occupancy? We haven't done that fully yet?
Correct. We're waiting to resolve this issue before we issue the certificate of occupancy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If they were to post a sign that said, "Compact car only," If they were to post a sign that said, "Compact car only," where would that go? Along the sidewalk, or?
It could go on the building there. I don't know if I have pictures of that. Let me see. So, this is the, the building, so, I don't know, they could probably post it in the middle here on this column, or on this column, or a wall, I guess it is, maybe not a column.
And is that big truck always, there's a big truck in the...
No, this was just a coincidence that there is a truck there.
And so, with the, with the staff recommended plan, basically, the two left cars would be allowed to be compact employee cars. The two right cars would have to be no parking, with the exception maybe of bicycles and motorcycles, I think I read on your plans?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it, it would make sense to, to allow bikes or motorcycles or something to park there. So, I suppose you could, well, I don't actually know if we have special rules for motorcycle parking or not.
Okay.
And how, I'm just curious, but where will delivery trucks go or park? Is there, is there space for delivery trucks?
I think that's what that big truck is, because they have a dock right there on the building, right?
And that just, does that jut out onto the sidewalk?
I believe that that, yeah, I believe that that is where delivery trucks would go. This may be a delivery truck that was just there at a bad time. I think generally you don't schedule deliveries for your busiest time of day, so... I, I think that spot has been used for deliveries for a long time, looking at the, the old aerial photos.
So, in your recommend, your recommended conditions, number four, you're saying all standard parking spaces must be striped eighteen, six, and the compact fifteen, six. Who, who is to decide how many compacts and how many standards there are? Could they be all compacts, or is there a formula?
I, I, well, so, I mean, what we're recommending is that, so if you look at the, so if you look at the plan where we talk about the recommendation, I, I should point at, point this out as well. Because the width of the, of the aisle here, we think that these two spaces should also be compact only, because the, the zoning ordinance says that this aisle has to be at least thirty feet wide without requiring some sort of a turnaround space on, on the southern end. So, we would, if they keep two spaces here, we'd want those to be compact as well. But, we're just thinking compact here, compact here, and then the two compact over here. There is, I can look up, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that says the zoning administrator can, can allow a certain amount. I think it might be ten percent, but I can look that up if you'd like.
Ten percent variance?
Like, ten percent compact-
Oh.
...out of all your parking, but I can look that up while, while we're discussing.
What are the spaces striped at right now?
It's, it's, it varies. I think all these are fifteen, ten. These ones are eighteen, two. If, yeah, if you look on Exhibit G or Exhibit H, you can see that. And then, of course, the ones on the northeast are various, because they're angled.
Yeah.
So, yeah, eighteen, two up there. All these are fifteen, ten. And then, these vary from, you know, thirteen and some change up to seventeen.
How often does the city give allowances to businesses in the downtown area to have spaces striped smaller than the eighteen-foot standard?
That's not information I have readily available, but we do have the provision for compact spaces. So, if you'll bear with me while I look that up, I can tell you what, you know, what the code says.
But, I mean, but in practice, are, do other parking lots have, do, are, in practice, I mean, I understand that the intent would be, you either have an eighteen-foot standard space or a fifteen-foot compact space, but in practice, do all of our downtown areas prac, do this, or do they, like, this lot vary between sixteen feet and eighteen feet or whatever?
That's not really something that I, I know, you know, right off the top of my head. If, anytime we get site plans, they have to meet, you know, meet the standards. A lot of the parking downtown is, is existing and has been there for, for decades, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, got it.
Well, I know that in Lincoln Square parking lot, there are spaces that say, "Compact only," because I've, there's a tree in the way or something.
Yeah.
And, so you have to put a small car in there, otherwise it should stick out.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Does the petitioner wish to come forward and be heard? You're a frequent guest here, so you know the routine, signing.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Fell, applicant for the variance, representing the owners. With, with all due respect to Kevin, I do want to talk about the abandoned use part of this, at least initially. That it is our contention that the, that the use of this property was never abandoned, and in addition to that, the, the photographs that I distribute, they were, the dated photographs I handed out of the site plan demonstrate at least the farthest, the farthest back map we could find was nineteen seventy-three, so at least for the past, whatever that is, forty-seven years, people have been parking right along Broadway Avenue and backing out onto it. So, I don't believe there's any reasonable expectation of somebody purchasing the building not believing that that circumstance can be continued. And especially on the, the spaces on the, on the northeast part, it demonstrates clearly that those have been used as parking spaces for a very long time. So, I don't under, I frankly don't really understand why we need a variance to, to have parking that backs out onto Broadway. The entire length of Broadway was, never had a curb, never had a wheel stop, cars parked in and out of there. The reality of this situation is, we're not making that any worse. We're actually making it a little better, because the, the cars don't have to back out anymore, and they can, they can use the interior drive to, to make it more safely out onto Broadway Avenue. And we, we didn't feel that it was necessary to provide a curb or wheel stops, and part of the reason for that is, the plan that the city approved for the parking initially had none of that there. We didn't replace, we didn't put a curb in, we didn't do streetscape, none of that, and it was all approved without that. So, it's, frankly, it's our opinion that, that the way it's striped now is, is not a hindrance or, or made, it hasn't made a nonconforming use worse, and what we've actually done is provided as much parking as possible for the food hall, because they have, they do have a parking problem at lunch, and we're trying to get as many cars as in there as safely as possible. So, with that, I guess I'll answer your questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I suppose, I mean, I would back up a little bit to say that our contention is, we don't even need a variance to do this. It's, it's a, especially along Broadway Avenue, we're continuing what's been happening there for fifty years. So, needing a variance to continue the same condition seems redundant to me.
We're not talking about this, are we?
This is what we're not supposed to talk?
Yeah.
That's correct. That's, that is not what has been, that is not subject to this variance request.
Well, I, I would, with all due respect, my contention is, we don't need a variance.
So-
We shouldn't be here.
So, are we not supposed to talk about whether or not they need a variance? Are we not supposed to talk about whether or not they should be allowed to pull out onto the street?
Hmm.
If that makes sense. The first-
Because the variance-
So, we'll just, yeah, so we're here to talk, we, we are here to talk about whether or not you get a variance. But, we, we will consider, you know, obviously, we'll consider whether or not to grant it, I think. But, I think that if you were to prove that you didn't need the variance, then any decision we might make here tonight would be dismissed.
My contention is, no matter how you want to consider, we don't need a variance.
Okay.
My contention is, we don't need a variance.
Right.
Whether, whether you want to decide in your own mind whether that's because we're continuing a nonconforming use or not, that's up to you.
Right.
So, I'll point out, there is an appeals procedure to address the, the nonconforming issue, and that, that is not up for debate tonight. That's not what is being considered.
Well, let's, you know.
So, no matter what we decide, it could be dismissed, whatever our decision is.
He can appeal. He can appeal. Yeah.
Well, I think, in regards to any major variance, the city council would, we would, we could stop it here, but if we approve, it has to go to the city council for approval, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
I always listen to my lawyer. You know, I just listen to him, and if they say not to talk about it, I'm not going to talk about it.
Right. So-
Go ahead. Okay. First off, is Kenzium, are they owners?
I can't tell you.
You can't tell me who you represent?
I can turn around and find out, if you would like. Yes.
Okay. So, this thing we got today is from part of the owners in Chicago. Okay, good. We got that established. You have this food hall here. You have a business plan. You're thinking about, what am I going to do with this food hall? I'm doing this, and you're thinking, oh, man, I guess I'm just going to need ten parking spots in front of the building. So, we go to the city. You go to the city, and you say, I just need these ten spots. Then, all of a sudden, you have five restaurants in this business. I don't know what the seating capacity or occupancy limit is. Your website says that, the website that, for the place, says that you can have a wedding there with up to four hundred guests. You have business meetings up to fifty guests. It seems to me that a good business plan, you were going to know that parking was a tremendous issue to begin with. And why in the world wasn't the idea of striping the lot taken back to the city?
I can't speak to that.
In, in defense of, though-
There is no defense.
Okay, so, okay, so, so I'll, I'll say, to play devil's advocate for why they should need parking, we're trying to make downtown Urbana a walkable area. When I come to downtown, I only came tonight because I put my son to bed, so I needed to drive here. Otherwise, I'd be walking here, you know. We, we want downtown Urbana to be walking. Many of their lunch customers probably walk from the courthouse or from the downtown businesses, so-
They do.
Yeah.
They do. It's another reason you don't need cars parked on a sidewalk.
That's fair.
You know, this board has been very, tried to be very friendly to businesses and stuff, but we appreciate businesses doing what they're supposed to do. And these letters from Mr. Bolger, to me, are very clear that, you know, you need to, if you're going to stripe this, you need to come back and show us what you're going to stripe. So, in my opinion, we need to sit here tonight and just decide, I guess, whether we want to do what the staff recommends. And that would be giving these guys or the businesses as many parking spots as we, as we feel that we can. They're going to be safe and keep the cars off the sidewalk, and get the majority of them pulling out forward instead of backing out. And Broadway's gone through several changes here. It used to be a four-lane road, and then they did, I don't know if we call it streetscape or what we did there, but, you know, we now have the beautiful bicycle lanes there. We have, you know, there's a bus stop on the, a bus stop on the north side, that if the bus stops there, the cars are going to peel around it, and then you're, you've got your backing out right there, and it's, I don't know if anything has happened yet, but the way people drive around here, you know, I think we've got to take all the precautions we can. And I guess that's about it. To me, you know, there's street parking. There's, I believe, seven, seven parking spots on the street. Of course, you got to put in fifty cents if you're going to stay an hour, but that gets the city the money. But, yeah, to me, this should have been, I think, something that was foreseen, and they should have worked with the city to get this done correctly, I think, in my opinion.
Excuse me. Are there additional questions or, or comments for the applicant?
Go ahead. So, are you able to tell us if you would like to close off that south entrance totally, or if, see, I don't know if the staff's opinion, is the staff's opinion to let them choose whether to close it off or leave it open?
Well, if, if there are parking spaces along that sidewalk, that curb has to be closed. That's city code. So, our recommendation had a couple of options, which was partially close it and keep it as an access drive, or completely close it and keep all the parking. And either of those-
We would leave that up to, up to the applicants?
I, I think that's a fine condition to, to give them some flexibility.
Is that something you'd consider?
Well, I suppose, I can't speak for the owner. It's not my money, so I can say, anything will be considered. I would, I would say, I think, at the, at the very least, in my opinion, fairness says, the spaces on the northeast have been there forever. We're not changing those at all. It's unreasonable, in my opinion, to believe that the owner should have had the foresight to believe that those would be nonconforming when he bought the building. They were conforming before he bought it. Why aren't they conforming now? I think that's, that's a reasonable assumption on the owner's part. The other contention, I would say, for, in terms of the stack, staff recommendations, is the, no matter how the parking lot is used, they approved a plan for the parking lot that included nothing on the south part of the lot along Broadway. It was, we, the parking lot was reconfigured. They didn't require a curb. They didn't require wheel stops. They didn't require streetscape to be done in a plan they approved. So, it's, in my opinion, unreasonable for them to request those things now.
But, isn't, weren't they required because there's parking there now? I mean, now their parking space is the point-
It was a park, in our, in our original plan that was approved by the city, it was a parking lot.
It was a parking lot, but there weren't cars parked, there wasn't striped for cars to be there. I mean, the point of the curb situation is to keep the cars off the parking, or, I'm sorry, off the sidewalk.
Correct, but it, but again, part of, part of the, the, I think it's unreasonable to assume the owner knew he had to do that, when it wasn't, it was never done before, with cars driving across it. With its, the situation of, of the lot that was approved by the city was infinitely safer than what was there before, and they did not require those, those things to be provided in the plan they approved.
Well, that's because it was a different design. I mean, I'm not going to disagree with you on every point, but to clarify, they didn't just throw that on top of there for no reason. I mean, they approved one design, and then conditions changed, and that, you know, ended up requiring additional safeguards for pedestrians.
Okay.
I just-
Go ahead.
I, I would say that if, whether I agree with your opinion or not, assuming I agree with your opinion, they didn't require streetscape to be done on the street along the sidewalk, so I don't think that should be required as part of this process either.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but I think that also is attached to- I'm not going to disagree with you, but I think that also is attached to other things. It's not just superfluous. If you're going to require a curb, then that comes along with other things, from what I understand. And it's... I'm not trying to, like, voice my opinion. I'm just talking about procedure.
Who made the decision where the curb cut is for the driveway? Did your company decide on the driveway?
Everything was there. We did...
Looks like new concrete.
It's pretty new. So, the curb cut was reestablished back between 2012 and 2014. The city did streetscaping all along there. As Charles pointed out, the four lanes were narrowed to two. Bike lanes were put in. Millions of dollars went into making the streetscape look like it does today. And then, at that time, the building still existed as it had for decades. So, the front part, which has now been demolished to make room for the greater parking lot, that was still there, and there was still pavement in front of it. There was still a parking area in front of it there. So, it made sense to establish the curb cut and the driveway there at that time.
As part of the streetscape plan in 2012, did you plan for any trees or anything there?
That was before my time here, so I'm not sure.
And, okay, thank you. And those four spaces in the northeast, one, I assume, in 2012, then, those were approved spaces, grandfathered-in spaces in 2012, compliant?
I'm pretty sure they would have been, sure.
Okay. And then, when the original plan for the city, that was approved by the city, was submitted by the group, were those plans approved with that original plan before the striping was done?
So, as I pointed out, I think it's in Exhibit D, which is the approved site plan. There is nothing for that area. I think it says that existing concrete to remain, but there's nothing that shows striping. Had there been striping, we would have made sure it was compliant if it could have been compliant, which I suppose it couldn't have been, since we're talking about a variance for it.
Was the striping already... Was old striping already there, though? No?
Not sure if we should be discussing that.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Do you have anything additional, Andrew?
No, not this time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from any members of the board?
Yes, go ahead. I'm not sure if I want to comment now or until after we have a question. Okay. Do you have a...
I don't have a comment, no.
No?
All right.
Yes? How important is it that cars not be able to pull onto Broadway from this? I understand that this is... This is a rule that is established. But as we've talked about, there are many cases where other businesses have that grandfathered in, that they can do that. And so, obviously, while what we're talking about here is granting a variance, it is a variance that we could grant, that the city council would then decide whether to uphold or not. How important is it to us that whether or not cars can or cannot pull onto Broadway?
Well, I think the key is that they're backing out onto Broadway, okay? And they're backing out everywhere, potentially, okay? Not even the four on the north, but all those south ones, they can all back out on the Broadway also, potentially, at this point in time.
I would say, though, have you been in that lot?
Yeah, and I was there.
I mean, you can back out, but why would you? You can still pull forward.
And if I were pulling into that lot, frankly, I'd come into the northern drive and then circle around to go face forward on one of these southern spots, so then I could pull out easily.
Unfortunately, we need to think for all drivers here, not exceptionally good, sensible drivers.
You don't know I'm a good driver. I mean, I am.
I was there. I was outside looking at it yesterday. And I was there at the noon hour, and I kind of walked around, walked around the building, looked at everything, came back. The final thing I was there, these people were in... Yesterday, there was... They're working on the boneyard, so they had a cat bulldozer-type deal. And the first... The two northern spots there of the four we're talking about, there was a small car in there, and then there was a van, SUV huge-type vehicle there. And I just sat there and wanted to watch this car back out. And as I watched this car back out, this... One of the guys that was working on the boneyard comes walking down the street, and that car couldn't see him because the visibility with the van and a regular car, you can't see over, so they have to back up slowly. And they missed the guy, and he stopped. But, I mean, in my opinion, you just... You can't... You can go ahead and give them the two there and keep them for staff. I guess that's fine. But the other ones, you have to somehow limit their ability to park on... Park back on the street, sidewalk, pickup truck with a ladder in it hanging over, you know? May happen.
Is it a matter of having the entrance, say, enter and exit? Is that one way to reduce...
Leave that up to them. I mean, you know, personally, if you go with the... You can have a southern entrance still, but if you want those... Do you think those two parking spots are more important than you need to block it in, if I'm understanding that correctly? Is that right?
I'm sorry, could you restate that?
They could leave a southern access, like you're saying, in and out, and it costs them two parking spots, under what you're proposing.
Correct.
So, they would have the north and the south, and that'd be a decision they got to make. I mean, I'm not here advocating that we don't let them have any parking there. I'm saying, let's just get it correct.
If there are no more comments, are we ready to entertain this? Call this for motion? Anyone?
Sure. I propose that we recommend conditional approval of a major variance to city council that would allow... Wait. Does that text include all of the conditions? Okay, sorry.
You can yes.
Okay. Conditional approval of a major variance to city council with the following conditions: That only the requests pertaining to the two southernmost parking spaces adjacent to the northeastern part of the building are granted. Those spaces with the dimensions specified in Exhibit G are allowed to back directly onto Broadway Avenue and must be signed to indicate that they're for employees only and for compact cars only. And the condition that wheel stops must be installed in all parking spaces that are above the public sidewalk, except for the two spaces referenced in the potential driveway, if the owners so choose to keep a driveway.
You get all that, Terry? Okay. It's been so moved, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let me have a roll call, please. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, you have one and three left out, two and four?
Can I point something out?
Yes.
So, if wheel stops are added to those parking spaces, they will be considered... Or that access drive will be considered closed? And at that point, they would need to...
The curb and everything would come into play.
Close and put in curb, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, then?
Go ahead.
There is no curb down in the lot that Little Portis has that I...
I'm not familiar with...
There is a curb, but it's on the other side of the sidewalk. I mean, the street side of the sidewalk.
Well, there's, you know, there's a lot of parking that is probably existing legally non-conforming parking. So, I mean, the only way we ever get to conforming parking is by having new developments comply with our current rules, right? So, that's probably existed for decades like that, so that can continue.
So, can I revise my... Since it doesn't make sense to include three, because that triggers two, essentially.
I believe the proper procedure is to withdraw and re-propose.
Okay. Then I withdraw my recommendation.
All right.
I guess I have a question, then, if we're going to reconsider this.
Okay.
If... And also, if we're not... I also think that four may not be necessary because I think that there's a lot of spaces that... This is a... This is a... I mean, as with all properties, this is a particularly odd... They have differences, but this is a particularly odd one because of the shape of the parking lot. So, I think that four could receive, you know, some consideration, like that we don't have to worry about the length. Could all four of those in Exhibit G... Could all four of those spots be able to fit compact cars if they didn't? And not... And then not get onto the sidewalk if they were employee compact cars?
It looked like it overlapped.
So, okay, so that is, let's say, 14-7. So, I guess, never mind.
Your question... All right.
I've answered my own question. Or you answered my question.
Okay. We are now back to the point where the issue is on the table. So, is there a motion regarding ZBA 2018-major-10?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that the zoning board recommend conditional approval of a major variance to the city council for ZBA-10-2018. Is that correct?
2018-major-10.
Major-10.
Yeah.
With the following condition: That only the requests pertaining to the two southernmost parking spaces adjacent to the northeastern part of the building are granted. Those spaces with the dimensions specified in Exhibit G are allowed to back directly onto Broadway Avenue and must be signed to indicate that they are for employees only and for compact cars only.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's now been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Yes.
Okay, if this passes, then we've addressed the four north spots, but we failed to address anything in the rest of the lot. Is that the way you'd look at it?
No, I'd actually look at it, if you only have condition one, the first word in that is only, well, the first few words, only the requests pertaining to those spaces would be granted. So, in that case, you would not be... Yeah, you would not be addressing the southern spaces, and there would be no resolution on those.
All right. So, do you want to withdraw and start again?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Then, I believe that it's now been moved, that this motion is withdrawn.
Is Exhibit G the site plan that was basically done by the developers, by the food hall? This proposed site plan?
Yeah, Exhibit... Yes, Exhibit G reflects current conditions and reflects the ask for the variance.
Okay. I'll propose we... A major variance...
Are you making a move?
I move that we grant, propose, whatever the word is, a major variance, with the exception that the two northernmost spaces be removed and the two spaces immediately adjacent to the south be marked as compact only, employee parking only.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any... Yes, go ahead.
That's the same thing, isn't it?
No, the difference is that, when I said it the first time, the way I phrased it, is that we were only allowing a variance for the two southernmost. We were only addressing those four. But the way that he just phrased it is that we're approving everything except for those two.
We're allowing the parking lot to stand as it is right now, except that we're forcing them to take away the four northernmost spaces, to adjust those. And I think that...
That's the way you're interpreting that?
That's the way it was intended to be. That moved.
Okay.
So, no barriers?
Correct.
So, with your motion, you are saying that the spaces do not have to be 18 feet 6 inches long?
Correct.
And that there do not have to be wheel stops?
Correct.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. It's been discussed. Are there any additional comments? Then...
Yes, go ahead.
I just think there should be wheel stops. I just think it's not safe at all. That's my comment.
Okay.
We need to have what type of a vote for this to pass?
Two-thirds. So, I think, or six present, so I think, needs four affirmative votes. Is that... Is my math correct? It needs four? Four out of six?
Yes.
All right. Always bad with math. All right. Then, I believe we are ready to have the motion called for vote.
Who seconded that?
Ashley did.
Ms. Chester?
No.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
No.
Mr. Warrenbrun?
No.
And Mr. Welch?
Well, the motion is defeated, so I'll just vote no because it's already not... Does not have the necessary votes to be forwarded on for approval. So... Yes.
Can this board have a motion like we just had, but include the wheel stops and specifically state that they do not have to do the streetscape or how it was described?
Yeah, I believe...
I suppose you could.
Yes. I think it can be... Another motion can be put forth, I think. I'm not up on all my Robert's rules.
So, typically, when I said that the first time, the installation of wheel stops would require then another...
Would trigger that?
It would trigger or require a curb.
Correct. Yeah, because then it would be... So, if you close a driveway... If you're no longer using it, which the wheel stops would make it unusable, then you have to close the curb cut.
Even if you had a driveway at the other end?
Yeah.
You still have to close the in-between part.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, in this case, it would be, you know, you might have people pulling in and running right into the wheel stops. So, but, because the curb cut says, turn here.
And would they then have to apply for another variance or something? Because the fact that we said it, does that make it conforming?
I feel like allowing it, if you're granting a variance to allow the wheel stops and you say, and you don't have to close the curb, then I think that should cover it.
The City Council can do what they want to this end.
This is correct.
This is correct.
Any additional comments, motions, or anything pertaining to this case? Are we done?
They have to pass something.
We don't have to, but we should.
No, we don't have to pass, we denied it, so we could be done unless somebody wants to oppose, I guess.
Propose something.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move, make another motion.
All right.
I, I still don't have the number. I... Thanks. I think that's the same one. I move that the zoning board recommend conditional approval of a major variance to City Council for case ZBA-2018-major-10, under the following conditions. Oh, let's see. That the variance is granted for all of the spaces, except for the four spaces adjacent to the northeastern part of the building. Right? Yeah. The two southernmost parking spaces must be signed to indicate that they are for employees only and for compact cars only. The two spaces north of that should be removed, and that wheel stops must be installed in all parking spaces that abut the public sidewalk, unless they put in a driveway as stated, and that a new barrier curb and streetscaping is not required behind the wheel stops.
I second.
It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion on this motion? Yes.
Do we have, seems repetitive. Do we have to withdraw? I'm sorry. The other motion we just passed?
Oh, no, that would fail.
No, we voted, it was voted down, so it did not pass.
Okay, so we voted that down, so this is completely...
This is no. At that point of clarification, additional comment?
So, we're, what we're saying is that they have the two spots to the north, compact only, employees, and then we're putting wheel stops on the rest of the spots that are currently there.
About the sidewalk.
Any spot that's currently there that they want to remain, they must install a wheel stop for.
So, they can have their drive on those two things, or they can put two there. And that we're not requiring them to do the curb.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the curb for the streetscaping is, would be just in front?
It would be behind the wheel stops, like between the...
It'd be on the other side of the sidewalk, and they would know, they would have to put up a curb.
Right. It's like a visual cue behind the wheel stops.
But with this proposal, they would not have to put up a curb.
See, the streetscape, they put that like little island in there where the fire hydrant is, and they planted a tree. They would have to, one, two, three, four, five, six spots right there that are kind of open where somebody could whip in off the street supposedly is why they would want something designed there, so I don't know if...
So, it would be really just one, two, three, four spaces where you would have to...
Right, if they kept the south open.
And it prevents people backing out onto a...
What, the curb?
The wheel stops.
Wheel stops.
Even though the curb isn't there.
It prevents them from backing out and/or parking on the sidewalk.
They're all questions and sufficiently clarified. All right. It has been moved and it has been seconded and discussed, so I call this for a vote, please.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
And motion carries with the necessary votes to be forwarded on to the City Council for their meeting of...
I believe November 5th.
November the 5th, 2018. Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any audience participation?
Yeah, wheel stops, all sort of new. I'm a planner.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce you in a second.
All right. Is there a staff report?
Not a report, but as Lily just mentioned, we are, we're fully staffed now, so we are, we're really excited to have Lily Wilcock. She was the active transportation coordinator over at the University of Illinois. She's joined us as a planner, so we just want to welcome her. This is her first week. I think she picked a good meeting to come to. I don't know. Do you want to like introduce yourself or say anything?
She hadn't left, so I guess it's a good one. Go on.
You're gonna, this area is for staff, so you can come up there.
Some of you guys recognize me?
Joanne says she does.
Which I appreciate the compliment the other day when you saw my dog. Yes, absolutely, yes. So, I am an Urbana native and graduated from Urbana High School 2007, lived in Chicago for way too long, moved back here as an active transportation at the University of Illinois. I've done a lot to improve bicycle transportation, pedestrian transportation, a little bit of transit work on the University of Illinois campus, and really excited to come and work for the city of Urbana.
Nice to meet you.
I do have a question, you know. Is the city going to require striping of all these non-conforming lots that no longer have their stripes showing?
No, you can't, well, we can't retroactively enforce the zoning ordinance on people or property owners.
All right. That's our point. Don't take it up close. We're done.
All right. Is there a staff report?
That was my staff report.
All right, thank you. Study session, was that your study session as well?
Yes, yep.
All right, then, I believe our business is finished for the evening. We are adjourned.